Motion to declare.
Second.
Second to declare open meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. Notification Open Meetings Act posted in the back of the room. Full call chants, yep, Caden?
Yep.
Wyatt?
Present.
Self here, Justin's excused, listen.
Yes.
Number six, approve the agenda, changes. Need a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Moving second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Move to the consent agenda. Starting with minutes from last month. Four minutes. Minutes look alright.
They included your monthly revenues in your folder, Caden, after the pact for on Thursday. So, as expected, May was a really healthy month. So, I mean, we're just in real solid financial strength heading into the late summer months.
That's good.
We'll probably start to make some transfers to athletics and nutrition fund. We budgeted a quarter million, we won't use all that, but... So, you know, Kelly just manages that, monitors that. Just kind of lets me know that it might be time to move some of those funds. We'll probably see that maybe next month.
Nutrition this month.
Nutrition this month, yes, you'll see the next month's finances for example. Sometimes wait till end of fiscal to bring athletics into the plan.
You got that new CD moved in?
Yes. Yeah, we can add to that. The flex is a... It is what it says, you know, you can add to that same CD or borrow from that CD. So, I will, you know, I'd recommend that we add, we'll probably add another hundred thousand to that CD before end of fiscal year. I mean, at any time we can do it. If we just had two million dollars in revenue, we certainly have that a hundred thousand to add to that flex. But we'll bring that up maybe a little more specifically next month.
No questions on those rest of financials, then we can go to the claims? Make bill to ESU, we can talk about that.
Two months, yeah, I got the one at the last month, so to start the adding, something we have a good revenue this month.
Is that ice machine a new one, or is that repaired?
Yeah, that's a new one, we repair it. Repair an ice machine, I mean, there's not much to them, there are bin that holds ice and then there are small motor and condenser, right? This is the lunchroom ice machine went out late last summer or early fall. So, we've gone really all year without it. They use frozen ice packs to suit their needs, but she found one, you know, one about half the size of the one we had in there, which... Yeah, you kind of need an ice machine, so I finally, you know, approved, I'll go shopping for one. Should last longer than five or six years, but that's all that. It was going to be three thousand dollars to fix. So, we bought a new one, about half the size, for about that same.
More claims, questions? Now we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, move in second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, motion carried. Number eight, celebration of excellence?
Just had an hour and a half of it, I guess you could say, but nothing specific for the board tonight.
Okay. Public comment, do you have anybody who wants to speak tonight?
I would.
Okay, let me read my statement here. We're now at the portion of the agenda set aside for public comment, each person wishing to address the board. If you're recognized by the board president, you must stand and state your name, you'll have up to five minutes to speak, only one opportunity to do so. Please remember this meeting of the claim public schools, board of education, public comments or conduct that are lewd, obscene, profane, slanderous, threatening, or hostile will not be tolerated. Be further advised, there's no legal protection for any comments that are made. Public comments an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for school business. Public comments not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board in the session. Board members will listen and take comments under advisement. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personnel or school operations. Go ahead.
I'm Dean Borer, everybody knows that. I'm here only to talk from a wrestling angle, I'm not talking for any other coaches. So, I just wanted to address the potential Osmond co-op. You know, I know that there's a concern with the fluctuation in numbers, I guess, for third grade through sixth grade. Where a small school, those kind of things are going to happen. From a wrestling standpoint, we have put in countless hours to make sure our program is a standalone program. We honestly, you know, we got seventeen, we had seventeen guys out this year. I'm graduating four and four are telling me next year that they're coming in. So, I think, you know, we'll have about seventeen next year on the team. And for class D, those numbers are really good. If we're in class C, those will be below average numbers, you know. When we used to be in class C, we had twenty-nine kids when Trey, Caden's class was in there, you know. But if on number three there, you know, Osmond has no coach in the school system over there for wrestling. That really concerns me. One reason why is I make sure, one of my personal goals is to talk to every kid in a positive way prior to practice every day. Whether I high-five him, pat him on the back, or whatever, you know. And because there's times in practice that I'm not always going to be able to be that way. If they're screwing around in class, if they're not passing classes, it's not a friendly conversation, okay? I won't have that connection with kids over there in Osmond, there's nobody over there to promote the program, alright? So, if we're putting seventeen wrestlers in on our behalf, and if they could say that they're putting ten in and five or six of them are above average, you know, that would be completely different. But I got the numbers here for you, and I just went to, back to 2016 because that was the first page on track wrestling. And you can see, last year they had three kids in junior high wrestling over there. One of them was from Wasa, so obviously he wouldn't come over, there were three seventh graders is what they were. And one of them was from Wasa. The year before, they had zero kids in junior high that wrestle. And they haven't had ten kids on their high school wrestling team in maybe twenty years, okay? So, if you're asking us to move up another class by taking on Osmond, you know, it's not like football. Football's so watered down now, there's eight classes as compared to wrestling, there's four. So, if we move up to class C, we're competing, the top is Cozette, Gothenburg, those, that size of school. And, you know, I would expect, if we're going to go together with somebody, we better at least pull somebody in. They had eight kids on their team this year, which is high for what they normally do. Two of them graduated, one was from Wasa, so they'll have five. But of those five, two of them might not come out if they come here because they will be JV, okay? So, I would think that if we're going to go together with the program, it should be somebody that's going to contribute about close to what we do, okay? Maybe we want to, I bet if we did a survey with the student body, there wouldn't be twenty percent of the kids in favor of this. You know, they're the stakeholders. Some other things, you know, we don't know about were, I, early stages, and I'm sure you guys don't either, but I know when Niobrara and Vertigery went together, they had, before Vertigery could start, they could start any practices at Vertigery, they had to wait till the kids got over there from Niobrara. And so, they had to sit around for twenty minutes because my son was strengthening, he went up there and did strength and conditioning. And they couldn't do anything until both teams were there together, you know. And I understand, the other one doesn't want to be left out or anything like that, so, you know, all those things. Do we have practices over there, is everything handled here, you know? I don't know that, I don't know if you guys know, are that far in the process yet, but there's a lot of things to consider, you know. There's a lot of things there that I'm not going to talk about. And then lastly, you know, if you're saying we're consolidated or something like that and we're together, that's completely different because I have exposure to every kid in their school, okay? As a co-op, nobody in that school over there representing wrestling? You know, I'm a hard-nosed guy, they see me in competitions, they might not think that I'm the best person to be around. Whereas if they're in my classroom, I mean, they might realize, eh, it's not terrible, I mean, I'll try, you know, type of thing. But, so, a consolidation thing is way different than a co-op. And the last thing I'm not even going to talk about, that's, you guys got to worry about that stuff. So, that's probably my five minutes, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to talk today? Okay, seen none. We'll move on into our discussion items. Number ten, the unit camera update.
Yeah, I don't have anything really new to report from last month. Next month will be a big report, so, a few new things have developed, nothing too dramatic. The big Christmas tree type bill that just, they lump a whole bunch of things in towards the end. Still a little fearful of that, and they got six fifty-three, kind of watching that close, but they are running out of time. My last report from NCSA was, hey, they're kind of getting bogged down right now, that's probably a good thing, they're going to run out of time. Senators aren't usually going to, they'll usually pressure vote yes, you know, we're out of time event. So, that will probably be a good thing because generally the less the legislature does, the better, especially when it comes to schools. So, I'll have a better report for you. Nothing dramatic has happened since my last report, should have a pretty thorough report for you next month.
Okay, thanks. Move on to facilities report, did we have updated?
Nope.
Any numbers, I haven't seen those.
You know, I've got something in your packet, which is a PowerPoint presentation that Derek Aldrich will share with you on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. He will be your legal representation to kind of lay out the legal process to push out an RFP and to select a construction manager. Bob will be here as well. It's been Bob's recommendation from early on to bring a CM on early because they'll obviously help you to dial in to scope and a much narrower price range on different options. Just because that's going to be a primary question that folks want to know earlier than you maybe have that data. So, we'll take a good step forward, I think, on the twenty-seventh. Again, that's a facility focused special meeting. We've identified our board advisory committee, our steering committee of stakeholders to advise the board, they've all been notified. We are meeting with them on Monday, a week from today. We've got twenty-two people that we've selected that have agreed to be on it. We invited about thirty, heard back in the affirmative from twenty-two. We told them we'll be asking for anywhere from, you know, six to twelve meetings over the course of six to nine months. So, quite a commitment, meetings that'll last easily an hour, likely two or more, maybe several trips to visit, you know, some school sites. So, we feel like we've really got a pretty good cross-section of stakeholders. So, we're going to meet with them on Monday, we're going to meet in this room, and we're going to go through Bob's facility audit again. Many of those folks weren't in the room, and it'll be good for them to have a little more intimate environment. We'll go through it kind of quick, probably won't take an hour, but we'll go through that whole slideshow process again. And the school's going to be open. I'm going to set some dates, some Sunday evenings coming up routinely, school's open from four to eight, folks. Anybody in the community, just come and wander about, we need that to happen, you know, pretty soon as well. So, this advisory group will also be present on the twenty-seventh. I invited them, or told them, you know, you've got two meetings in the next two weeks, a week from tonight, and then on the twenty-seventh. So, we'll start to get some good engagement with that group, who's going to be your primary advisory group.
Are there any board members that are supposed to be in that? A couple, or how is that going to work?
Well, I'll get confirmation from Bob, it's not a, we can't have a quorum, obviously.
It'd have to be a couple each time or something.
Yeah, so, I think, I'll get advice from Bob, I'm sure it's not, no, we want you to stay away, but it's not, no, let's assign some... You know, so, it kind of, just lay out kind of, you know, responsibilities, what the board needs from them. What the board needs from that, what you need from them. So, you know, again, I'll visit with Bob a little more about that, certainly communicate with you, but we made a good progress. Kyle and Jen and I kind of split that work up, invited people and kind of officially notified them today, okay, you're in, and here's two meetings on your calendar already.
You have a pretty good response, and if you have twenty-two back the third, they can be a trigger.
Yeah, I think folks are excited about that. I put some survey data in your folder, I believe.
I don't know if I saw that.
Oh, wait a minute.
Are you going to make like that advisory committee members like public, so?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, a hundred percent, yeah. Jeez, did I?
I don't think we got that.
I copied it, and then, so, I'm going to, I'm going to pull that up. Hundred and seventeen responses. Hundred and seventeen responses isn't bad, that's really pretty good, I mean, that's about a, you know, probably under a quarter of our total electorate, I mean...
This was just based on the other night when you were in the gym, right?
Yes, we had seventy-nine, seventy-seven responses in the gym, so, we're looking at forty cents.
Paper copies.
That, we had, yes, we had more than a handful of paper copies, but obviously we pushed it on social media. So, we've had a dozen or more that have found it on social media. So, that overwhelming response there, unanimous support there that they want the board to move, go ahead and move forward, you know, take the next step. This is, you know, not unexpected priority. Academic is generally, we knew academic would be the highest priority, athletics would be the lowest priority, and then, you know, kind of, obviously, the other two, the other three in the middle, career pathways, elementary performing arts, okay? Do you support the closing of the street? So, this data I shared with Mr. Tar, this is very valuable, I think the city council has a meeting tomorrow to consider this. And so, if you've got ninety-three percent support from a hundred plus respondents, if this was twenty plus respondents, that's a pretty small sample size. A hundred respondents, not, well, not overwhelming, but that's not bad. Especially, you know, ninety-three percent of a hundred and five responses said, okay, we're open to this. We're open to this if we, then, the voting taxpayers, approve a scope of project that would require that space. So, the street won't be closed if we don't get to the point where we need that space. But, but the city is likely to vote, to go ahead and close that if the school district needs the space. But I shouldn't get out ahead of the city council. The zoning commission did approve it, so the city council generally accepts the recommendation of the zoning board.
At what point do we need to make a motion to hire a municipal advisor? That's got to be one of the questions.
Yeah, I would expect, and I'll find out, that could be on our special meeting, action item agenda, for sure, in June. So, when I talked to him, to Tobin, he was at the meeting in the gym, he's like, you know, yeah. I said, now, I didn't, have you, I didn't, you know, involve you in any of this, he says, no, I'm not, you're not ready for me. You're not ready for that conversation. So, I said, okay, we'll be in touch. Right now, I don't anticipate Tobin being here on the twenty-seventh, just Bob and Derek. But I'll ask Bob, at what point do we contract with, potentially contract with the municipal advisor?
Is the MA or the CM, which the MA comes first probably, or they both about the same time, you got to start?
Well, yeah, pretty much, just about simultaneously. It'll take us till mid-July to select a CM by the time you get an RFP out, to get responses. I would expect we'll get three to six, just from the feedback that I've been getting, and just letting me know they're aware and interested. I had one visit today, CM visit today.
Okay, any other questions on that for now?
Seven o'clock on Tuesday, twenty-second.
Yeah, Tuesday, not next day, I have one more date. Okay, well, we'll move on to number twelve, and the ad hoc activities clock report. Kind of sent out a quick email to everybody, but I'll just, you know, reiterate what we talked about. Obviously, we met with committee from Osmond, what day that was, it was the, not important, a couple weeks, last week, was it?
No, wait, two weeks ago.
Sorry, two weeks ago. Another, had another good conversation with them. Kind of decided that, you know, a junior high co-op at this time makes the most sense. Wanted to take a little more time considering any additional high school sports, but we do have that decision to make coming up this fall, if we want to do anything with football for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Because of the two-year center.
Right. So, the only thing on the table tonight, junior high co-op, that's it, no varsity sports. They had a, they did have an agreement with Wasa, junior high football and wrestling, but...
Right. High school wrestling.
In high school.
High school football, high school wrestling.
Junior high football, junior high wrestling. Anyway, the football, they've indicated to us that they'd be interested in getting out of that, and coming this direction. Just kind of feel like they're looking for somebody who's got, who's going to commit, you know, long-term, they've kind of been bounced around between Randolph and Wasa and Parrots and students, you know, just been going a lot of different directions, so, they'd like to... And we talked a little about how that would, if we do a junior high co-op with them, that would open up opportunities for the youth programs to work together as well. So, get the kids knowing each other, you know, at younger ages.
There already is a lot of, yeah, there already is a lot of interaction in the youth programs now.
A lot of kids come over here for youth wrestling programs. We have a fair amount, we play soccer together, they play baseball together right now, in fact, there's a game playing tonight. There's six odd boys on the way out on these teams. So, there's a lot of interaction right at the level, but that would increase, or we'd probably pull in football. As you said, youth football goes with junior high.
Yep.
That's the league rule anyway, that youth football, they have to follow with junior high football. So, maybe how Osmond, football players, now we have to do to Wasa, so...
Did they express any long-term goal, other than just consolidate at the fiscal, and cooperate in all sports?
As far as like consolidation, I mean, they're getting that far into it, I mean, they're open to something, but they think this is a first step towards that. As far as getting in this serious conversation, we didn't have any of that, so...
And there was no discussion of any rebranding?
No, they're going to order as Pirates, they'll be Pirates.
And how would the cost be shared?
Traditional co-op, cost share, you know, split the expenses, split the revenues.
And those kids will be bused here?
The logistics would be athletic directors will work it out, or having specifics get.
Like Kate mentioned, he'd have some experience at Crofton Bluefield, you know, some years Crofton had most kids, other years...
Yeah, it was years where it was...
The easiest way to do it is to split everything because it fluctuates back and forth.
How often would they want to have events at their school or at their fields? I mean, junior high is not like high school events, but how often do they want to have events held in their community?
Well, again, we didn't talk about varsity sports, really.
I understand, but they're still junior high games.
Just the intent, anyway. I think they'd like a few, but they're not expecting, I don't think they're expecting even a split. I don't know, they're by any means doing that anyway right now, because we haven't gotten that far. It's basically nothing more than junior high or area, so it's, you know, if they decide that they need to have a junior high basketball practice or something like that, in a way, potentially over in Osmond, in a way, athletic directors will work it out. And they haven't gotten any of those specifics worked out yet, correct, we haven't gotten that far, right?
No.
So, yeah, there were some opportunities to practice, that having kids have to come, you know, before school or something, to practice early because of June conflicts, you know. It might work sometimes to go practice over there one day, we had a conflict or something going on here, so, there was a little bit of that talk. But yeah, no, they would come over. Gym time would be about the only, you know, winter sports would be probably the one thing that would cause us to probably start looking to shut the kids out of there. Have to practice, I mean, basketball practice, that's a tough one, anyway, so, there is a little bit of conflict with, right, they do their junior high sports practices in eighth period, we do ours after school, that's kind of it worked out.
Which they made it sound like that was a pretty easy adjustment to just go after school with us.
What time do they get out of school?
It was within, it was within five minutes of when we do, so...
So, our kids would still have to wait until they arrived here?
Not necessarily. So, by design, we didn't talk about all that.
They have eighth period anyway for their high school sports.
They said that they can let them go early.
Be over here.
Yeah.
That's right. And let them go early. Eight year earlier than us, they might be waiting on us, honestly.
Hopefully, the time they all load up, drive ten miles, and unload, probably not.
By the time you don't, at this point, lock in X amount of games, X amount of practices, you just, you've won a lot of faith and trust and cooperation, right? And so, it'll be reasonable for them to say, you know, hey, can we, could we do this game, this game, and this game out of twelve junior high games in Osmond because we're playing this team, this team, this team, for whatever reason? You know, that's probably a reasonable ask, you know, we'll all be in their gym wearing, playing the Pirate, you know, gear. But they never asked, if it was important to them, they never asked for fifty-fifty split on coaches, practice place, game place. They didn't ask for any of that, they said, we'll come over here and be Pirates. But I would expect it's reasonable for them to just, you know, occasionally say, you know, can we do this, you know, over here, this time, that time, or that time? Again, coaches and A Ds will work that out. And, you know, they're just, communication will be an important key, but, you know, if you lock into those things, and then guess what happens? Then those are, I think, minor things that can, you know, spoil the whole opportunity and the whole future of it.
A lot of it, we're going to have to kind of learn on the fly and see how it goes, you know. But it'll give us, especially if the kids start this summer a little bit, it'll give us a little more time to see how we're getting along before we make any more decisions. Before we make any more decisions, you know, with the falls.
What does our staff and our coaches have to say about this?
Are we talking junior high or are we talking first?
Junior high.
Junior high, and talking to them, only one had questions about it, and that was travel, because they go the other direction. So she's from Creighton, she was saying if we have, if she has to travel and go to Osmond for practice, that it might be a deal for her, where she's not gonna be interested in doing that, but outside of that, it increases our number and gives us full teams and more competition at the junior high level. Instead of trying to practice with nine kids, we're practicing with twenty, so.
Take my football, my example?
No, basketball.
Basketball.
Right now, we have nine boys interested, nine girls, they bring over ten Creighton.
I thought it was pretty positive discussion, you know, they're, I think they're kind of excited about it. I think it does present some, some good opportunities for us too, you know, because right now, we're in pretty good shape, but who knows, you know, the future, it's like, really, we're working with some kids to fill teams. It's kind of just the, the first step, you know, of trying to work together, so. Well, I, I, you know, we talked about, you know, this year we'll probably be okay, and next year for junior high football, for example, just plain view alone, we'll be lucky to have ten. Sounds like it. So, uh, let's look at the number group, which they could, because then they cover seven grade classes next year. There's sixteen boys, fifteen boys in the class.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, maybe, but only four have shown an interest in football. So, I mean, participation, oh, it's pretty low there. Um, and it rolled over, anyway, we, I said, I was ten kids, can't let practice with ten junior high football. And there's other sports too, we talked about basketball, right, junior high basketball, tough, right Kyle?
Yep.
Next couple of years. Girl sports in general, right, for the ball and numbers, junior high sports.
They're girl-heavy.
They're girl-heavy. They think what, you know, we thought it was a good place to start with the junior high co-op, they were, they're willing to do that, go full with all the sports. You know, we thought we should, at this point, keep focusing on our facilities discussion until next fall, and get back into, see how things are going. Talk about this a little bit more, that's what we're recommending, so. All right, well, move on to thirteen, review board policies.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and table all these, they're all, they're all educational program policies, and guess what? We'll have a rewrite of quite a few policies from our, from NASB, so these will all potentially have a rewrite as soon as the Unicamel gets done. So they might be part of a big package in July or August that we're gonna go through and win, so we can go ahead and just take.
All right. Move on to action items, and number fourteen is discuss and take possible action purchasing School Guard app for a thousand dollars and a setup of ninety-nine dollars a month.
I would like to say that I spoke to Kristy five minutes before I hired a racketeer, and she would, she would be very happy if we made this purchase. If something should happen, it connects to the Hero app, or Hero nine-one-one, which would alert state troopers, local police, first responders immediately, and they would all head this way. She advised getting this.
So Justin sent out an email, he's not here, it looked like he was comparing this to something else, what was that other?
Well, our new phone system that's, that, that will be installed this summer has some of these features, for sure. There's a panic button, I believe, on our phone system, that, that's coming, and I, you, you read Justin's email, and he came in and visited with me, I really appreciate it, you know, and just coming to sit face to face and say, you know, well, okay, you know, concerned about, can, can we require our teachers to put an app on their private phone? If there are updates, if they get a new phone, are they gonna remember to put this app on, are they gonna, just, just some concerns with the necessity of it, is there some, I think, I shouldn't speak for him, but you, you got the email. Maybe some redundancy and purpose, um, you know, I, I guess I, yeah, so, yes, it was, a state trooper right next to me, uh, you know, last month said, Dr. Earl, do you have the School Guard app? I'm like, gosh, I've never heard of that, you know, that shame on me, I guess, and he showed it to me, and he said, hey, just check it out, you know. He says, there's a couple of schools in your area, he gave the names of them, they have it, contact superintendent, yeah, we've got it. So generally, you probably download it and forget it, quite honestly, um, and that's maybe a concern, you, you kind of forget about it. And then if you need it, you know, do you find it, is it still there, oh shoot, I got a different phone and that app isn't there, or there's been an update and I did not, you know. So, yeah, Justin's concerns, I think, are certainly valid.
And then it's gonna make, it's gonna make every teacher's phone like, oh, boy, like, blaring an alarm, right?
Uh, yes, it, it notifies everybody, if somebody hits.
My concern is, if there's an active shooter, and he's over there, and I'm hiding over here, and your phone goes off, and he comes in, if you know what I mean, like, that's, that, like, that.
Or is he gonna run, because he knows there's alarms going off, I, you know, I guess.
The thing about events that calls the Capitol, you can alert them all.
I, I asked Justin about it too, I said, so, France, just the whole company system will not call local law enforcement, except.
Not, not automatic, so there's a, a panic, nine-one-one, so it was nine-one-one, now their turnaround was pretty doggone good, obviously, but.
This would, you hit the button, Christie Hallack, State Patrol, County Patrol, they're all getting a notification on their phone instantly, that's the main difference there.
And it doesn't have to just be an active shooter, like, it could be a natural disaster, it could be anything.
Yeah, and there's a couple of options on there for.
Teacher assist, so, yeah, I got, I got something going on in my room, I need Mr. Schmidt here right now. Yeah, and, you know, right now, that phone system will be helpful, we do have some other archaic office notification systems in a lot of our parts of our building right now, that, that, you know, will be a small part of the conversation about modern facilities, but, uh, yeah, it's just something I, yeah, I obviously thought, I wanted you to be aware that I'm bringing to you from a, a meeting with first responders.
So does your phone have to be like on loud for it to work, or can you put your phone on silent?
Yes, I, bless, did you find out about that?
If it, if it overrides a silence, it does, just, just like when you receive an emergency notification from, you know, you might have your phone on silent, right? And you'll, you'll get a tornado warning notification on the phone. Because, you know, I mean, they're fully aware that teachers are supposed to have their phones silenced in school, you know? So they, that, that's overwritten in the case that you have to hit a fancy button about it, aren't you?
I do, I do like how it contacts, you know, any nearby law enforcement automatically, that, I think that would save at least a couple of minutes, you know.
Seconds, seconds matter, when you've got an active shooter.
That's the one thing I can see that you like about it, otherwise, I think the phone system would be sufficient, but this is, I mean, we're not talking a huge amount of money for the kids' sake. No, that's twenty-two hundred bucks anyway for the first year, and then, you know, thousand dollar setup, hundred bucks a month, basically, it, um. I, I, yeah, I'd hate to not give somebody the tool and go, I, I, law enforcement, you know, we don't have the new phone system yet, that's gonna be done this summer, or this, this summer.
Because if one teacher hits the panic button on the Nikon system, and it calls nine-one-one, it doesn't put the whole school into lockdown, it doesn't bring the State Patrol here and bring everybody here. And they, and they, like, this app would, in an event of something awful.
Sure, so this, this would be act one two.
Right, this is a different kind of emergency, where if you just hit the call button in the room, that would just call nine-one-one, and you would get Kristy here, or Andrew here, and not everyone. So that is the difference between them. I think it is a good investment.
It might be something like twice a year, we have to tell the teachers to make sure they, you know, when you have meetings, to say, hey, you got your app updated.
Justin's concern is valid, to, to make sure, you know, we test it up to date, you know, however, whether that be a, you know, beginning of the year with staff and any, you know, new staff. And just reminders, hey, if you got a new phone, there are a lot of routine reminders throughout the year that we share with, with teachers.
We certainly hope you never have to use it.
Yeah.
And the likelihood that we are gonna have to use it is pretty low, but yet, it's not a big investment to, to keep the kids.
I don't think it's unreasonable to ask staff to have it on their phone, I have a plethora of apps that I have to have on my phone for my work.
For their own safety as well, so I, I don't, I don't think it's a hard ask, or one that would receive any pushback on, but, uh, we'll see.
But they're, a plethora, a whole holder of apps.
I'll make a motion to purchase the School Guard software app for playing new public schools for a thousand dollars initially, and then ninety-nine dollars a month thereafter.
Okay, so we move consecutive to purchase the School Guard software app for playing new schools for a thousand initial costs, and then ninety-nine dollars a month thereafter. Melissa?
Yes.
myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carried five oh. We move on to fifteen, discuss take possible action on first, power school official subscription, amount of twelve thousand eighty, so. I don't know.
So the, the first quote you got was for, or the one that's in the packet, was twelve thousand eighty, the one Dr. Earl just handed out is for eleven thousand eight hundred three, thirty-eight. So it's about a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper, the first one that came out was for ecollect and enrollment express. So enrollment express is for anybody who wants to enroll in school here, you would put a link on your webpage, they just go click on the link, they fill out a bunch of documentation, enroll, it sends us a notification, and then we start the process of transferring paperwork back and forth. We have probably ten kids enroll a year, maybe, I think, ten to fifteen, so that's something that, I guess, I thought was something we could go without, because the ecollect piece is, um, every document that we have as a school, that we send home with kids, or have you fill out at the beginning of the, of the year at orientation, would all become digitized then, so all of your enrollment forms, your demographics, your computer usage, all those things would be ecollect. So we would send it out through, it's called My Power Hub, so you'd have an app from Power School, um, we send it to you, you fill it out online, you send it back to us, and then it automatically puts all of your information into our student information system in the computer, and so, uh, Tammy and Tracy, they take probably the whole first month of school to sift through paperwork and enter all that information into the computer for every student that we have here. This makes that done simultaneously whenever the person submits the paperwork to us. The other thing with My Power Hub, instead of doing the enrollment express, I would wanna do that, and that's what the new quota is for. That allow, opens conversation between teachers and parents as well, so there's a built-in messaging system between you and any staff member at school. So it gives you your child's schedule, it gives you their grades, it gives you all of their assignments, and the teachers can put notes on if there's missing assignments or whatever, and send you a message that they didn't get their homework done, they have to go to Advantage. And all of that is done, done through Power School instead of a separate messaging system. Or if you have a question about a homework assignment that your kid missed, or why was that put in as zero, you can instantly message the teacher and ask that question, and then they can respond to you.
What are we using right now, it's a, it's a different messaging system?
Right now, we just have, through Power School, all we do is the voicemail, and we do the voicemail, the email, and you can do a text message, but none of that is back and forth. So as parents, you can't respond back to it, you can only receive information, so the hub allows you to get, um, give information back and forth. So all, all communication back and forth between teachers and parents now is done by email, or given out personal phone numbers.
Got nine different sheets here, is there something different here?
Now, there's only, the one that has May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to September ninth, twenty twenty-eight, and then the totals are eleven eighty, all that.
So basically, if we went, if we bought the total package for, all the way up to twenty twenty-eight, it would be twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents?
Correct, so that would cover for three years, the eleven thousand, the reason that's so high is because of the implementation and training, so half the cost is training. And then after that, um, the costs for the subscriptions go down, we're spending about five thousand a year for the next two years after you have all the training and implementation done.
So then, does it just expire after the two thousand twenty-eight, and then you have to re?
You don't have to do the implementation and the.
So you should be able to just keep paying like a subscription fee?
Subscription, five thousand.
Probably five, it'll probably go up every year.
So Sharon, are this is saving teachers' time, administrators' time, I mean?
Secretaries.
Secretaries.
Administrators.
All the above, yeah.
You can go as far as sending out camp forms if you wanted this way to kids, instead of us sending them home in elementary book bags and stuff, our coaches can just send it to third, fourth, fifth grade, and then you would get that through the hub, or. When you go to the zoo and stuff.
Or field trips.
Field trips, there you go, you can send, field trips, well, I was gonna say vacations, but hey.
So can they sign them and return them digitally?
Yes.
Because if they receive it digitally, they're not gonna be able to print it up to, so, so that, that's pretty good, it, it just, it does kind of just bring us into twenty-first century communication and data management. I've been asking Kyle and Jen for, for years, when we have orientation, and we hand parents a packet of ten forms, about eight different colors of papers, and we fill out the same information area, I said, hey, this, there's no way, this is the best way to do things. And then they said, okay, we can do this, I said, nope, that's too expensive, that's what I told them for a couple of years in a row, well, you know what, I've let you guys make that decision, because it is a little archaic about how we manage our student data. Like the idea of parents communicating with teachers through school devices rather than personal devices, I made a lot of parent contacts today on my personal device, fine, uh, we'd like to train people to use the Power Hub, because once they're there, they now have all their student data. Once they're there, communicating with us about something, or they go to get a form and return a form, oh, let me check the kids attendance, grades, missing assignments, or I should say, gosh, they're doing great, and this, that, and the other thing.
That's not stuff they can look up right now.
They, they, they can, they just don't have a reason generally to go there, we want more reasons to just direct them, it's one-stop shopping, it's all right here. And yes, the initial, the, the startup training implementation is always the, the, the piece I hate, which is the hard piece to bite off, but then five to six thousand a year for twenty-first century student data management and communication with home. It's just the way to do business, and has been for years.
Is it an app on, on your phone, or is it something you gotta be on?
Yeah, you can do it as an app on your phone, or you can use it as a link on a, on a web browser, either way.
So the parents more likely will just download the app?
Yeah. I would say the amount of paperwork that goes home in the elementary is probably two to one to the high school, and Tracy spends an incredible amount of time trying to manage the paperwork, or chase down forms that don't always get returned. And so this app, or this Power Hub being a one-stop shop for all forms of communication, I think will help parents make this more of a user-friendly, you know, this is my go-to to communicate, because I can tell you, we make phone calls on a daily basis, we are emailing parents on a daily basis, we are texting parents on a daily basis, someday, all three of those forms of communications are utilized. Where if we can just say, this is your go-to, stop, shop, and communicate for everything for the district, I think it will empower people to be more involved in communicating about. I think it will empower people to be more involved in communicating about the needs of their students.
I can see that being helpful where you're not having to email or text or, you know, calls.
Yep, and there are some times where people just.
Trying to answer all those, you get confused what you're talking about.
Uh-huh.
I think it'll help with some personality conflicts as well. If there's an issue to the parent and the teacher. I think it'll help and it'll be easy as administrators for you to keep track of that.
Uh-huh.
I think it's a good idea.
So you go preschool roundup, you're not gonna get a big folder of different forms?
I think it's the same thing as high school, like orientation and.
Yeah, so that would eliminate that.
Oh, yep, correct.
I'm missing half of the presentation.
Cause that, all those papers are going up.
Or I'll give you another prime example, we have spent the last two and a half weeks trying to track down paperwork for our track and field day that happens next week. And um, I had Paris helping organize and Tracy was trying to track down, that would all be electronic and we wouldn't.
So can we use this for our, in both that we have to carry all the time, like? Would that be?
You don't have to carry it, I know.
Well, I don't know.
But no, that, that.
Six year, five years.
School board, digital school board meetings, we're, we've taken a little step in that direction, but uh, that's, that'd be a different handle.
I'll make a motion to purchase the Power School hub digital subscription for eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent.
Okay.
Okay, so we moved consecutive to purchase Power School hub digital subscription to the amount of eight thousand, for eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent. Go ahead and vote, myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Yes, Chance?
Yep.
Motion carried five oh. I know I signed the checks for the copiers, all the copies of this.
Yeah, this time of year we get our overage expenses.
They'll save some money there.
Yeah, copy machines, once they get, every, every year they get older, the higher, the more you pay for overages, yes.
We'll move on to sixteen. Discuss and take possible action on improving school district share expenses to pay Lincoln Street.
So Mr. Tar shared with us quite delightfully, a couple of weeks back, that the bids came in lower than anticipated. When we had an initial engineer bid last summer, it was one point whatever million or prepared for that, thought shoot, it will be even higher by the time we get here next summer. Uh, and, and you know, Jeremy said, hey, they're just, you know, bids are coming in lower somewhat nationwide because of the concern of budget cuts and those and just a variety of things, so they're, they're bidding plenty low. So bid came in eight seventy-five, oh four, one fifty, Pine Street, all Lincoln Street. And so uh, and you know, we've had conversations for months now, like, well, our shares just gate to gate, fifty percent of gate to gate. But you know, when you see the plan, the gate to gate, a, a majority of gate to gate is really school, uh, school ground side. Cause we'll have more concrete, if you go right down the middle of Lincoln, there's gonna be way more concrete moving south than north. Because the plan is the concrete all the way to the fence, the football field, cause that'll be parking. And then all the drainage is gonna be our half. So we have a much bigger chunk of the gate to gate. Uh, but to try to figure out, pull out Pine, pull out that bit of Lincoln going east and then try to figure that out. Uh, Mr. Tar said, well, let's just, let's, let's propose, propose a fifty-fifty split of the whole bill, which is probably pretty fair, even though it doesn't mean we're paying for fifty percent of Pine. And he says Pine Street is really maybe no more than fifteen percent of the whole bill. Eighty-five percent of it is Lincoln and ninety-five percent of that eighty-five percent is the gate to gate expense. And more than fifty percent of that is, is ours, so I say we vote for fifty percent while it's offered.
The couns- that's what the council asks for, yes.
Yeah, so.
Pine, Pine is the north-south street?
Pine is the east-west. Pine is north-south.
Pine is east-west. What's the east-west one by the egg shop?
That is Harper, Harper.
Is there a game gonna be done on that?
No, especially cause with you guys redoing your um, options for the school, you guys would manipulate that and change that.
Harper and King were just, they ball that alone, you know, but.
What are we doing with drainage again, or is that the one?
There's some going, some going east, some going west, so some of it's gonna curve around on the west side.
Of the football field?
Of the football field to get the spill away. Others is gonna kinda go where it goes now, but then it's gonna go even a little further east off, off of King. So where the, where the, the, the parking lot is, you know, that's got a, 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 a earth and ditch just on the side of the fence, just on the manor side, the east side of the fence. That's gonna be a little further east than that, right Jeremy? A little further east than that. So i- i- in five years, half of that will be residential on the east side. And the west half will be not necessarily wasteland, but a lot of drainage. Uh, and, and so, and concrete, obviously the water will move a little more. Still have issues on real heavy rains, we take one now for sure, but um, they, they, they know how to, to move water down there, it won't move fast, but at least it'll be on concrete.
We doing any sewer work down there yet on that alone, with that new housing development?
No.
It will be before you find sewer water, we all stepped in, we'll do that, yep. Um, so it'll be actually three drainways, one on the west of the field, one directly east of the field, and then the one he was talking about across the fence, we'll move it over. We'll pull that fence out and it's actually the bid to bring more dirt in, so you'll be able to park on the east side of that road as well. So you're actually gonna gain more parking even on that gravel road. So obviously you lose some amount of that grass and wet field, we're actually, we're gonna build it up and gravel and everything, so your buses for track and foot law can actually park on the east side of what would be King, but it's actually your guys' property. So the drainage ditches now on the east side of the road will be more parking for you guys.
Instead of button up against the fence there.
It's right now that, yeah, you, that, King, King is, is pretty narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can call it street, right? So it'll be a pretty elaborate, uh, the plan is to start and finish before September one?
Yeah.
Ideally.
Yeah, pretty close.
So if, for sure, it, it won't be done September one, but I mean, they're gonna get after it this summer. If we're approved tonight, the council's approved tomorrow, we'll pull the trigger.
When's our first home football game?
Twenty s- uh, twenty-ninth of August.
Yep.
Yeah, so it'll be a mess, almost for sure.
And I'll see you at York.
Maybe they do like a neutral site, like colleges do.
We bring a little levity to the, to the trash can.
Yeah, uh, I forgot about that, uh.
How are we gonna get traffic down to baseball, let's Jeremy?
Baseball's done.
Baseball will be done.
So we'll do, we'll do.
You're gonna start before?
Well, we'll do Lincoln, we'll do Lincoln and Pines, what's projected, and so you'll, you'll bring in everything from the west. And then as soon as you guys get the heck out of there, we'll do the west side.
Cause you're gonna curb and close out a little lane we use right now to get down there.
Correct.
Coming from the west side.
Yep, so when we get done, the new entryway to the baseball field will be the west entrance, the off-out field when we get done. There'll be curb and gutter on the entire north side of Lincoln Street from gate to gate. It'll be a hundred percent parking except for in front of the concession stands, the bathroom, there'll be a little, what Darren called a plaza, it'll, it'll be all concrete, so you can eat and whatever out there. Otherwise, it'll be curved the whole entire way. Then there'll be a sidewalk, so that's, that's the thing that you're gonna see too, it's not just a street, it's parking, it's sidewalk, it's um, so there'll be curb and gutter on the east of the, of the bleachers. And then there'll be a nice sidewalk area, so you won't be able to pull up the fence, you'll be able to have some people be able to stand, sit, whatever they wanna be right there. But you won't be able to pull up and block off any walking traffic. We will have to reroute traffic for, right now, they ha- they have a tendency to angle towards concession stands, that won't happen. We're gonna direct them straight across from where the concession stands are now, or from where the bleachers are now, which shouldn't be a problem, I mean, it's just natural flow. So we're gonna gain a lot of parking down there.
So you're gonna start like, like mid-July, is what I'm hearing?
No.
No, we started.
So when you're doing baseball.
Yeah.
You don't come in from the east side?
No.
No, I mean, I mean, sorry, if you're in baseball, you won't be able to come in from the east side.
That's what I mean, won't.
You won't come in from the east side, you'll, you're in and all that from the west. Then when you're done, we're there, that's when they can attack the west side of the baseball side.
Okay.
So it's gonna be phases here?
Yep.
Okay, alright, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah, so you'll always have access to baseball.
That's what I wanted to know, okay, great.
I wouldn't leave you hanging.
Yep.
What is the timeline on the housing project?
Uh, the housing has a lot of factors, we still have to go through some contracts with, with the company and we're looking for some grants up towards the rural workforce housing part of it.
And how many houses was that?
There's five lots there.
Five lots?
Yep, uh, now, here's the thing, that doesn't have to be five lots, if someone's come in and purchased two lots and built one house there, we're powered to them.
Doesn't it have to fit certain specs?
If they didn't wanna use the grant stuff, I'm saying, like if somebody wanna say, hey, I wanna build a house next to the school and have a backyard, a football field and see baseball and have them walk there, they can come see me and they can buy it and build it. It's not dedicated to any one person.
Do you have anyone interested in that?
Uh, not yet, we really haven't advertised that yet because we haven't approved a paved street. So we really haven't done anything because if you guys said no, we weren't gonna offer a gravel road with no, you know.
Yes, understood.
Yep, so we haven't, we haven't pulled the trigger on anything because we're waiting for this right here.
So you have thirty percent of the amount already in building fund, this is about a four and a half cent levy on building, but you got a third of it in building already. Exactly how it'll be funded, the city's gonna fund it different than us, we, you know, you just need to approve the funds. Whether we're gonna pay a share and they're gonna pay different, or whether we're gonna pay the city, you know, that, that, you know, we worked out, just need you to approve fifty percent of the bid.
So this, this will help with our, I mean, the drain, getting the drainage will help the track, right? It's not gonna, I mean, we're not gonna have the track deteriorating, like we're not gonna be pulling buses out like you had to. Tracking, right? Buses stuck down there.
So the only spot that won't be, won't be curbed is east of, or, sorry, east-west of the bleachers. And that's because the tracks is so low, if we were to curb it, we would actually block the track in with water and it would fill up like a bowl. So there won't be any curb, it'll be flat concrete and there's gonna be an extra flume that goes around the whole entire fence to actually draw that water off the track to get, to get to push out. For that reason, because your track is so low right there. So when we engineered it, um, while Kyle, Kyle was there, we, we couldn't build the road up because your track is so low, that, that's the low spot, the entire area is, you guys.
They put it in a real smart spot, that.
I'll make a motion to approve the school district share paved Lincoln Street not to exceed four hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second. Second, approve the school district share paved Lincoln not to exceed four hundred and thirty-seven, five, twenty, seventy-five.
Uh, hold on, one second. If you have contingencies, so if you have contingencies and everything, you might wanna do like fifty percent. Because if something happens or you change something, or when you're building, it's kinda like, when you're building a house, there's always gonna be a problem, so don't lock yourself into a number.
I'll make a move to approve the school district share to pave Lincoln Street not to exceed fifty percent of the whole project.
Thank you.
Okay, Kate?
Got seven.
Okay, it's moved, it moved consecutive to approve the school district share paved Lincoln Street not to exceed fifty percent of the total project. We're gonna vote, myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Yes.
I think people will appreciate that, you know, it should work pretty smoothly.
Just take what's not one point five, don't.
Yeah.
So it's great.
Okay, move on to seventeen, discuss and take possible action on the first reading for the full junior high sports corps, support co-op with Osmond beginning in twenty-five, twenty-six a year. With the expenses beyond coaches' salaries and revenue to be shared as equally as possible. Yeah, we, we did, you know, we have one reading this month and the second reading next month.
Same language.
For Osmond, Osmond is doing the same.
Yes.
Their reading tonight. So if we approve it tonight and then we have different feelings next month, and like this, next month's vote, Trump tonight's vote?
Yes. Yeah, both boards decided that this, we'll take two readings to pass.
Okay. Alright.
I would like to have a climate survey done from the coaches, the kids, stakeholders, on how they feel about this conversation beginning. And this happening. I just would like to hear from everyone. If the coaches are okay with this, kids are okay with this, I'd like to hear from our people. Is that clear?
Yeah, but it won't, it won't be, half of them won't.
It won't be tonight, I understand that.
No, half of them won't be in favor, the majority won't want it. Because, you know, this isn't so much about them, this is about the future. But, but it, I, I think it's relevant, Melissa, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I mean, you're not wrong.
And when you, you know, I mean, earlier you asked about if we've talked to coaches and, you know, we, we, we have, we've probably heard more than we've gone out to go and solicit. You know, hey, what do you, what do you think? We have, we have enough coach turnover, I mean, I, we, particularly at junior high level, and those positions are oftentimes assigned. So yeah, we do, we, we do want to hear from you, but you know, it, it's, it's not a, it's not a. Look, this decision is about the future, not so much about what our current junior high coaching staff is comfortable with. Because I, cause you're right, I a hundred percent understand. There now will be minor to significant levels of inconvenience compared to what our folks are used to. And I, I do respect that it's a, that, you know, why are we bailing them out? Kinda sense, sensation, I, I do understand that.
Well, it's not so much that, but what is the long, long term?
Well, what, what sells me on is it's more pirates. It's more pirates in our practice room, more pirates on our bench, more.
But it's not more practice always in our account.
Yeah, uh, you know, I did a little bit of work on junior high level revenue and expenses. It is incredibly minimal, obviously high school's a much bigger animal. Your, your coaches' salaries is your biggest expense by far, you're, you're gonna have, uh, and that's not part of the, the expense sharing. And equipment, so uniforms and equipment, transportation, transportation. Uh, revenue is minimal, junior high sports always runs in the red. But it is within our whole athletic uh, line, bucket of cash. So that the revenue and expects, and expenses is a, is a bit of a, a bit of a non-factor, I hate to make it so simplistic.
The expenses are shared, like salaries?
Yeah, and it's not salaries, so they would pay their coaches on their schedule, we would pay our coaches on our schedule, but.
You may not.
But uh, our, our A Ds would both keep a set of books that they would work together, maybe they'd use a Google sheet, right, that they share. They, here was our gate, here was our expenses for officials, we needed to buy some uniforms. I don't know what else we have for revenue besides minimum gate. And then at the end of the year, you're like, well, we had six thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars in expenses and we had eight hundred and forty-nine dollars in revenue. Mix it up, split, and somebody writes a check to somebody for half of that.
Is the travel split into, I mean, expenses for fuel?
Yeah, that, that would have to be considered, I, I think, but you know, probably, you, we, that would, might be something we'd, we'd maybe look to exempt just to, you know, cause they're gonna be traveling more than we are to come over here for practice. For, for games, you know, um, are we gonna, are we gonna meet there, they gonna travel there, we'll travel there and meet there, are they gonna come here and get on a bus and then we go? You know, almost, that'll be a game to game probably, uh, set of circumstances, so try to figure out fuel mileage and all that. So I'd probably encourage the board if we have that to, you know, if our boards just, let's just not worry about travel. And coaches' salaries will take care of all that locally and.
We should get, we should get more gate, I mean, more, there should be more gate charged. Oh, there's no gate?
There is, we, we charge gates for, for junior high did.
I do.
We do.
A couple of years ago.
For basketball?
He just walked in.
But not for football.
Yeah, that's it, came in, came in the back door with the key fob.
I agree, this is, this is a long-term look, this, this, the discussion is not about now. If you look at now, don't really need to do a whole lot. Uh, it's a long-term look. I don't, I don't think it's fair to discredit coaches, I think if anybody, they might know better than most people. They're the ones doing it, they're the ones dealing with the kids. At the same time, I get we have turnover, but we can't totally discredit that. Yeah, I don't, I don't mind, you know, I've gotten a lot of calls. Uh, I've had more, I'd say, in favor of junior high, I'm not sure what that split is. Just cause I can see that that's where the numbers, that's where we could use some help right now. But I, I, I don't mind getting a bigger feel, I'm glad we're doing two readings on it, that's the minimum, right?
Yeah, Melissa, we can easily gather some survey data at your request. But it, it will probably, you know, come back, let fewer in favor then.
I, I just, I feel that, you know, in the future, we're gonna have to partner, one way or another, it's gonna be, co-oping, it's gonna be consolidation. This gives us an opportunity to see how we get along. If we can work together, make it a long-term relationship, I think that's all, obviously, it's, it's gonna go well eventually. It's kind of testing the waters. It's kind of a test in the waters, if they can help us, we can help them. And we'll have another discussion, you know, would be, you know, fall, high school, for now, just talking junior high. Just think it's a good way to get, start this, and see how things go. We're not locking in.
No, that's the nice thing about junior high, it's, junior high is, NSA A tied to it, yep.
It doesn't work, we're done.
Yep, you're out of it, so, there's no contract.
We're not making a four-year agreement, two-year agreement, nothing.
We think, I mean, we think it's gonna work.
You'd be wrong.
There's, on their side, they, they would like to make it work, so.
But, you know, there, there might be a lot, there's a lot of what, anyway, that junior high is, will wait, will be toe in the water here a little bit.
Yeah, it'll give us some time to, to age it.
But yet, the serious vote that's coming in, look what it'll end up with. We're gonna university co-op at some level or not. That'll be a tough decision, this is, easy your way into that decision. And we can have a lot of, we're gonna have to, we have to have some conversations over the next few months, to see where it goes from here to, we can't wait till October, start thinking about it again, we're gonna have to think about it in some months, you know. I wa- I wanted to ask Mr. Boyer, I had something wrote down when you were talking, you know, you said that there's not a lot of kids from Osmond that are going out for wrestling, but do you think if we went together, that them having a chance to come over and be a part of your program that's been so successful might, might get more kids to wanna come out?
Not if they're not in our building, I don't think so, if I have access to them, that's why I said consolidation would be a whole lot better, but I don't think in a co-op. You know, and I was showing you there, so in a three-year period, or in a five-year period, they have five kids out for junior high wrestling, that's with a wrestling coach in their system, and now, he's gone, they're not hiring another one, I highly doubt it.
Okay, well, I just want your opinion, it's a question I wrote down when you were talking.
If you look at every sport, cross-country, they bring way more kids than we have, volleyball, they have more kids than we have, football, they're bringing the same amount of kids that we have, basketball, they're bringing more kids than we have, wrestling, we have more than them. Track, they bring more kids than we have, we're gonna have big junior high teams that can compete at a good level and have competition in the gym every single day. And that's what we want, opportunities for kids to compete, opportunities for kids to challenge each other, and create an opportunity where we can play full JV games, full freshman sophomore schedules, full varsity schedules. Not just, hopefully, we have a team because we have a small group of kids coming through right here and we can just limp through it. I don't want that, I wanna be a part of something that's bigger and that and better. And more kids makes you bigger and better. With the right people in place. And we have a lot of great coaches, and I appreciate their opinions, and we can make good things happen with more kids.
Well, it's, it'll keep coming up this summer, you know, as we keep moving forward. I guess I, I'd make a motion to approve the first reading, full junior high sports co-op with Osmond Community School for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, revenue and expenses beyond coaches' salaries to be split as evenly as possible. To make one comment.
Sure.
Okay, before we have a second, you know, that, I wanna stress full junior high sports co-op, no picking and choosing, whether that's on, if, if they decide to pick and choose something, cause there is a little bit of, it might be a little bit up in the air on junior high football, yeah.
Yeah, they're hesitant.
Well, if, if they, they have a four-year agreement right now with Los.
Wait for a report.
What's that?
Wait for a text.
Okay.
Be nice if we get it before your second.
If they don't do it, if it is not all separate words on there, and anyway, then our motion is null and void.
Then, because they had the same action that we get, and so, they should have the same language for, to make a motion that Tim just made, so if they changed it, then, then we're not saying.
If they change ours, it's not void, it's off the table, and it's off the table for good.
Yes, we have to have. We have to have essentially four readings that are all the same, two here, two there, back-to-back months.
Alright, yeah, I'll second the motion then.
Move to second to approve first reading, full junior high sports co-op with Osmond Community School for twenty-five, twenty-six, with revenue and expenses beyond coaches' salaries to be split as evenly as possible. Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried five zero.
I do agree with your approach, but I think consolidation would be better in the long term.
If this is the start to it, we'll have a full year.
I have a chance.
It's not gonna happen right now.
No, the problem is, when we discuss that kind of stuff in our committee meeting, they, that's their issue with Los, Los wants to talk consolidation before dipping their toe in co-opting, and they, they're seeing that as backwards. So this, to them, and this is probably how it works throughout the state, most schools co-op and then consolidate, right, they don't just consolidate.
Sure.
So, this would be leading to that, if, if it's worked, if it works, if it doesn't, it's okay.
Okay, I'll get on to the report section, uh, starting with activity directed for.
Uh, we have district track on Wednesday, so we have eleven teams coming in, timing system is up and running, the wind as of now is in the right direction, so we only have to one, run one finish line. Uh, we have our athletic banquet on Thursday, spring academic all-state winners, academic all-state winners that are on there, um, and then summer weights, we have set up, uh, to start the first Tuesday after Memorial Day, which is May twenty-seventh. And then that dead week is the week that coaches panic and have their days, July twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, so we close both gyms to get, uh, the Pirates getting refinished, and then we close the weight room as well, so.
So the track system work good?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I wanna commend you on approving that.
We saved three thousand dollars as of Thursday.
Better than I anticipated, Kyle and Tom.
Did you just say?
Saved three thousand dollars, kind of, you spent twenty-nine to save three.
Yeah, so, so, something that is, that is. Yeah, yeah.
And we bring, this will be the third major.
The, the system that we have to display places and times within seconds across in the finish line, everybody, you know, school, a lot of schools have a timing system, they don't have this, this piece, and so, if you come to district track, you'll see this thing elevated just past the, uh, the finish line. When they come across, within seconds, uh, their name and time scroll, scroll second place, third place, fourth place, displayed for all our people to see, uh, for the runners to see as they come across, when the multiple lap events, they can see their time. I mean, that's a pretty doggone nice little feature too, so it's not just the two dudes in a trailer, you know, watching a camera and making sure they get the time, so, you know, there's, there's just, there's good, uh, spectator, uh, feature, you know, that goes with that too, so, Tom and Kyle did a good job, that thing came in, they had forty-eight hours to turn it around and make it work.
I wasn't paying attention to it, I was focused on my kids.
Yeah, I suppose, your kid running, yeah, waving to everybody, running to my, at away, what? Slugging along, simplifying.
And we're gonna use it at the elementary track and field day, so those kids will eat it up and just think that is the greatest thing ever.
Yeah, that was a, a good event.
When's district track?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
And they don't want to school on this.
I, I assume that stuff is like, uh, weatherproof and sunproof, I just seen it was all out over the weekend, and like, you know, being worried, maybe like, grabbing that stuff, I, I don't know, that's just what I thought, it was a taxpayer, maybe.
The, the cameras.
There's, yeah, there's the.
The stand.
Stand.
The camera goes on.
Yeah, you did the camera.
Yeah, all the equipment's down.
No, it's just the hard wire.
Just the stand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not the valuable stuff.
No.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Just a note on that, we had, uh, that color run this weekend, and there was some more electrical posts that was some caution paper on that, those were not in the ground, there's two kids that cut their foot on those, the sharp.
Oh, the V wasn't a little dry one.
Yeah, so I, I went back over there and pounded it in with it, I didn't even look on the other side, is there anything down there? You might not get those out of the ground, but, uh, it's safer now.
Just take a vice grip and spin them, that's what you do.
I just thought, if we got districts coming, and we're gonna have a lot of people here, I don't need anybody getting caught in one of those.
So that's a thought you're gonna think about that road too, if you need to add more electrical over there, or ballards or whatever, cause that's gonna be all concrete when you get done. Contingencies.
Should all be underground to the infield at some point.
Looks like next spring.
Okay, we'll move on to the principals' report then.
Um, I went to the E S U today to, uh, participate with some other schools for the grant that I had talked to you guys about last month, uh, that is still in the works, I'm very optimistic that in some fashion, Plainview Public Schools will be awarded something, so I will keep you posted on that. Uh, probably the one thing that we wanna highlight the most in the paperwork that we gave you is the testing data that we provided you, uh, we tried to kinda showcase fall and spring statistics, uh, we map testing is the district assessment that we use, K eleven, um, and then N S G A S is our three-eight state assessment, and, uh, you'll notice quite a big of a difference or improvement in the scores from fall to spring, and that's something, that's our ultimate goal. Um, the N S G A S test is a pretty valuable tool that we use to measure the job that we're doing, and we were overwhelmed and overjoyed, I guess maybe the better word, just to see how well our third through eighth graders did on that particular assessment. I kinda showed you, for example, if you look at fourth grade, fourth grade did phenomenal, you'll notice a hundred percent of them were on track, and last year as third graders, only half of them were, so, we feel like there's a lot of progress being made in the right direction, and, um, these numbers kinda show you that information.
Yeah, thanks for including that, cause we like to see that every time, you know, three, four times a year, that's great, you know, that information.
I mean, we've been talking plenty about sports and improving stuff for sports, it's great to see these numbers, and it's great to see them go up this much.
Questions on any of that data or anything? Okay, if, uh, move on to twenty, the president's report, uh, yeah, the main thing is, uh, special meeting will be on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, seven, seven o'clock, so, put that on your calendar, uh, I wanna thank Wyatt, he's gonna take over for me for graduation, so I can go see my nephew out, Denver graduating, so. Figured you, wouldn't I give this son of a blow?
He gets one.
It's not one, I didn't see any.
I'll check. Receiver to pull up, each following quarter. He did, he did make sure there was no speech at seven o'clock.
No speech, we're gonna incorporate, uh, president of the board gives the opening address, and sings the national anthem. I hereby resign, I have permission.
So I appreciate him filling in for me, so I can do, so I can do.
Yeah, make sure, cause he needs to come to practice.
We got practice Friday, ten o'clock.
Really?
If you wanna come to practice, you can, otherwise, it'll be a crash course on.
Hand right, hand right, that's all it is, right, hand left, shake the right.
Smile, white, next.
White, thanks, white.
Alright, twenty-one, Super Dennis' report.
Okay, just, uh, I, I gotta commend Ms. Slajek, our art teacher, we, we hosted the conference art show, tremendous amount of work to do the art show, just to display all that, you gotta grow a lot of work just so you can put those things up, but, she's fantastic, and then on the heels of that, she puts all the kids' artwork out in the hallway, so when we have the elementary art, the elementary music program, it's an event here, at elementary music program, I, they don't, people don't just come in, listen to some music and leave, like you have at most elementary schools, we got book fair going on, we got artwork everywhere. So just really, our, our teacher, Ms. Slajek, is, is a doggone, uh, champ, uh, talked to Bill Beckenhauer, uh, on the fifth of May, I said, hey, alright dude, school's out, he says, yeah, I'm looking at my team, uh, but to get them deployed, I'll let you know, haven't heard from him yet, the nineteen-twenty fix is gonna happen, but just hard to get old Bill pinned down, uh, but, yeah, I'm making sure he doesn't forget about us. Our evac reunification drill, don't know if you got any feedback from anybody, went as, as good as it, as it always does, I mean, we did change our high school evac site to condo and reunification there, I think the traffic flow was just fine there, team does a good job of, of having that go as smooth as it can possibly go at the library and at the condo church, so, uh, just kinda did our annual practice of that, we think it, everything is, it, it is, is good to go, uh, and just the, the usual monthly data there for your information.
I did forget, uh, Breit and Moret sent the board, and we'll thank you for accommodating her, her dancers again.
And for a bigger donation.
Great news, great, you guys can see that. Okay, we've got the end. Jurgen, thank you.